Good evening, everyone. It's 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item, there was a conditional use hearing scheduled, but it was canceled at the request of the applicant.
Postponed.
Postponed, I'm sorry. Postponed. Postponed to a later date. So we'll have to decide that at some point this evening when we want to reschedule that. Yes, ma'am?
What is the property address for that conditional use hearing that was postponed?
It's South Ridge Road. I don't know it off the top of my head.
It's not stated on the agenda.
It was on the legal advertisement though. It was in the advertisement, it was in the paper.
Well, no one uses the newspaper, Lisa. Well, no one reads the newspapers.
Okay.
Okay.
It was 821 South Ridge Road. I'm sorry?
821.
821 South Ridge Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, this time we'll pledge leave. Thank you. First item is executive session. The board had an executive session on April 28th of this year to discuss a personnel issue, so we're notifying the public that we did have that executive session. Okay? Next item, public comment on any agenda items. Sir?
Jim Waldron, 313 White Church Road. I believe you're going to discuss EB clearing?
Yes.
I have a little statement. First off, in the Pennsylvania Constitution, there's, I was in last year concerning air quality. And then the Constitution, hold on one moment. I'd like to read it. In our state constitution... Hang on one second. Anyhow, 27, other than 27 is the Clean Air Act in the Pennsylvania State Constitution. Now, I'm having a hard time reading it, but I just want you to know that clean air is part of our state constitution in 1971. With that said, with regard to EB mulch, I had some air challenges last year, of which, of recent, in all honesty, it was good until a farmer spread it yesterday. There was a farm. But with that, there's a DEP piece coming up with their water runoff, and it's to EB clearing, of which I assume had to do with how they were setting up their facility and the water. My question is, if after I read that review from the Conservation District, of which was assigned from the DEP because they don't like coming down here for some reason, it doesn't address the water that's in the pond. And I would like to know whether or not that water is healthy water or not. Furthermore, I went onto the state site of the Department of Environmental Protection, I'm shaking, forgive me, and the first line with regard to whether or not you need a DEP permit is air quality. Now, again, I assumed this township made him do the DEP for the land clearing, but with regard to the business and his open air, did this facility require that he get the proper DEP permits to make mulches? Now, he's, is it DE, or is it EB land clearing? Or is it EB mulch? What company is it? That's my question to you. And then at the same time, is it mulch? Or is it compost? That's my question to you. And in the event that he's running diesel machines all day long, is he using the proper fuels? That's my question to you. So with that facility...
Can I interrupt you for a moment?
Pardon me?
Can I interrupt you for a moment? Can you put all these questions down in writing?
No, this is, no, you're just asking me to stand up. And then at the same time, somebody told me, Gus, he said, Jim, you got to write all this.
I can't answer your questions.
Well, that's my thing. Why don't you jot it down? Because you're the employee of me, the citizen, and start asking these questions.
Okay. Let's, first of all, did this public comment on an agenda item, you're kind of getting off schedule a little bit here.
Well, okay, well, you're shutting me down.
No, 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 no. Let me finish, please. The Adams County Conservation District has the authority for the stormwater on the site on White Church Road, okay? That's their responsibility. They've informed us of an inspection out of courtesy because we're the township. They've done that. EB Clearing also have another land development plan submitted on old Route 15, so there's two different developments going on here, okay? So I assume you're talking, your concerns about the one on White Church Road, is that correct?
I'm concerned that the correct permits are attained from that facility so I can live safely and we can live within the Constitution of Pennsylvania. And in that constitution, it goes on furthermore to talk about historic preservation. In that same piece, the property within 300 feet of that operation is pre-United States. My property, and I do my best to curate history, send a constitution. And this group of folks should be aware of that when they start with the zoning map and what they're doing commercially. Another thing with regard to this township is air quality, and there should be air quality on the roads with people spraying on the roads. There's people that walk the roads, run the roads, ride the roads. And there should be some sort of ordinance here with regard to safe air on the roads.
Okay, let me interject again. DEP has the authority for the air quality, not Huntington Township, okay? But let me finish. And it is also illegal for any municipality to have a stricter law than the state. So I understand your concerns.
It's not a stricter law. It's a law that this municipality insists that an operation that is in our thing follow the state laws. That's my problem. And when I went to the Conservation District or down in Gettysburg, they told me to come back to the township. And if you look at the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, everything starts in this township. So when you do a commercial zoning piece, you have to say, in the commercial zoning piece, in order to be a commercial facility in our township, you have to abide by state law.
Well...
And that should be on the table. And that's not telling law, that's not making law. Say, look, in our township, you follow Pennsylvania state law.
That is a requirement of any...
Well, you'd have to state it to people. Because it's not stated, because I called the DEP and they told me to come down and talk to you.
Okay. Well, sir, you've...
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
That's my voice.
Okay, thank you.
If...
Yes?
If I may make a suggestion, this gentleman's been here a couple times. So why can't the board invite DEP, who's ever represented up there for this particular matter, and the Conservation District so that he could ask questions and it could be discussed among the residents?
I would suggest that he work directly with DEP and the Conservation District with his questions.
I did directly work with DEP, and they told me that there is no permit until I come down to you in the township. And that's the guy from DEP. He'll be happy to check the rudders, he'll be happy to check the chicken place, but in order for him to come down to EB, he told me to come to you. So I'm coming to you. I don't know all the laws. This guy at the end's supposed to know all the laws. This guy at the end's supposed to look at what DEP needs. The first line on DEP is air quality. The first line. Now, why you're not insisting that a business operate under law? You're the ones that brought that to my, you brought it to me. You sat and said, this is where we're going to do commercials.
Mr. Waldron, please. DEP, DEP has been out to that site, I believe, and inspected it all.
Yes, they have, and they want it to be resolved. And I need you to say, you know what? We have a commercial business that's generating air quality issues, and we need you to continually check on him.
Okay.
And we need whoever the zoning guy is to get with the DEP guy and say, what are the rules? So I can check it.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items? Okay? First item is approve the minutes from our April 10th meeting. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
I see no problems.
Excuse me, who have another question? Yes?
Yeah, if you could, after you review that, I would like you to read the, where I asserted last month a Sunshine Act violation, so I would like you to read what's in those draft minutes before you approve them or after you approve them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I'll make a motion. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move is a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you're requesting we read your comment.
Well, what the secretary put down.
Mr. Boyer said the position had already been established along with the wage. Marie DeGangi said it was not on the agenda. Okay?
I specifically requested that it state that Marie DeGangi asserted a Sunshine Act violation.
And then, then under public comment, we have a statement. Marie DeGangi commented on the hiring of a part-time employee. Okay?
That's not okay. It doesn't say, it just says it wasn't on the agenda. It doesn't indicate my assertion that there was a Sunshine Act violation.
Well, from my perspective, if you feel there's a Sunshine law violation, there's a process to file with the state to deal with that.
One of the, okay, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Solicitor, there is a requirement that anyone at a meeting, you have to, before you file anything with a magistrate or the Court of Common Police, that it is an assertion of a violation and it must be put in the minutes.
I'll review the minutes. This is the first I see of them. So I'll review it, and I'll review the law, and if it's deemed necessary that we need to amend them, we'll amend them.
Okay.
My minutes are not to be verbatim.
I know that, but I requi, let him check and...
Our solicitor will check, and if it is, we'll correct it. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, approve the bill list. We have the bill list somewhere here. Total expenditures for the month were, from the general fund, were $297,870. The biggest one being the Hobbs excavation for $192,000 for the culvert, part of the culvert payment, as well as the donations we approved at last month's meeting. The fire company, the ambulance service, they're all large items. Any add to that?
Nope.
We have copies available if anybody would like to see them. Okay? Any other questions on the bill list? Comments? I entertain a motion.
I make a motion, the accepted bill list is written.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial report, let me go through that, Pat.
Okay, the financial report from 88th. In the general fund, our balance is $570,080, let me say that again, $570,856.18. The ARP, there is no longer an ARP. I will take that off of there eventually. And in the state fund, the balance is $287,452.83. And that lets us a balance of $858,309.1. But I had a duplicate entry last month, so I need to take it off of here. So this is not to be shared.
Okay.
And it's not approved. It only gets acknowledged.
Thank you. Biscellaneous items, Adams County Department of Emergency Services is having an office, following offices memorial service on May 30th at 10 o'clock. It's at the 911 center, so FYI.
The public's invited, and there's flyers over there about it.
Thank you. Roadmaster's report?
Yeah, we painted lines on Oxford Labor Camp, Torway, White Oak, and then we did two blacktop, blacktop two culverts we replaced. Attended, we attended PSAP's conferences past couple days, and we started our mowing, first mowing of the season.
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisors' report, anything? I have nothing.
Nothing.
Just, I received an email, township received an email about concerns from South Ridge Road about the truck traffic again. That had been discussed before, so I responded to the citizen that it's a public highway. There's no restrictions on that road, obviously. But I did talk to JBI. I guess some of their drivers are cutting through there, see if they could try to cut that back a little bit. Okay? And garbage service, we had one complaint about the waste management damaging a trash can during the pickup, so they reached out to waste management as they should. Okay? Zoning officers' report?
The zoning office is in a period of transition, so there's no reported this time.
Okay. We need to ratify that?
You have it under new business number three. I mean, you can go out of order if you want.
No, we can wait for that, that's fine. Engineer report?
Not much has changed since last month. Greenbrier Road is still open and restoration is still in progress. Myers Town Road, low bar, site development was a word of the project. The pre-construction conference is coming up here in a couple of weeks, and then they're going to get started about June 1st. Update to the SADO is still going on. The draft is in the hands of the solicitor for his review. Plans, JBI group was conditionally approved at the last supervisor's meeting. 4J Farm, the plan was conditionally approved by the planning commission, and board action is required by May 25th. EB clearing slash builder property land development plan was received for review. Comments were issued, and their engineers addressing those. Board action is required by July 27th. And we just received a new plan for the trimesters for a single-family land development plan. Board action for that is required by August 17th.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott?
No.
Fire company reports, anything, Pat?
They sent the reports that there's nothing we need to talk about.
Okay, under old business, the Greenbrier Road project, there's nothing, we already talked about that. Same with Myers Town. The ADA review, the, obviously, the parking lot's been painted. We have a sign now for the front door. We widened that door. The front door needs some modifications, which we're working on that to get that correct.
Yeah, whenever they get the...
That's scheduled at this point in time, too. We're working on those.
As soon as they get the hardware.
Have any questions?
Yes?
About the ADA review?
Yep.
Under right to know request, I received the report, the draft, the report, and several emails. It's concerning because on March 11th, I believe the report was March 10th. So Mr. Schaefer, Gary Schaefer indicated, I did note your comments and have corrected, and, I'm sorry, this is to Pat and you, and have corrected those specific items and completed a general grammatical revision of the attached document referring to the report. I hope this will suffice as the general review that you have requested. I did use two checklists available online to help in my review of accessibility compliance, but despite the hundreds of items noted for review on this course, I stayed with the general review of the accessible route, parking, entrance, wearways, areas of primary function, hallways, toilet rooms, that you asked me to provide. Then, another email from Gary Schaefer, and this is a bit concerning to me. I proceeded without a formal agreement, and I'm not sure what fee for my survey was discussed. I ended up with more time than anticipated, but can manage with an invoiced fee of $500. If that will be acceptable to the township, please let me know if that works or if an adjustment is needed, and I'll have my accountant create an invoice when she is in later. So is it the usual procedure for the township not to enter into a legally binding written contract when dealing with contractors?
Is that, is this public comment or what is this, Marie?
It's a question about what's on the agenda. It's a question.
Okay.
Because it's very concerning...
Mr. Schaefer provided a service inspection of our facility. When he was here, he told me his hourly rate, and I said, that was fine. He did it, and he spent more time, and he came back and actually gave us a discount on what it would have been. Okay?
He gave you a discount after the 500?
No, no. What I'm saying is, it could have been more than 500 based on his hours he spent. As he noted, he spent more hours.
Yeah, because...
But, I mean, there's...
I don't think there's an invoice here. I see a paid receipt, but I didn't see an invoice in there. But how is Mr. Schaefer found?
He was recommended by our building code inspector, James Urthing, as one of the persons who knows the regulation.
Yeah, because I find it interesting that you have a meeting, and I understand that there's a threshold for administrative costs, et cetera, but it's concerning as a resident that this man had no, like, you had him do just general. So like, okay, Mr. Waldron indicated he's hard of hearing. He asked you to speak up. There's nothing about, that there's no microphones here for hearing impaired or whatever. So that's just something I think that the township could kind of think about. Because since 1990, under the ADA, this township was supposed to create and go down that list of all those items, those hundreds of items, and mark down, and then over the next years through 2025, anything that needed to be upgraded was supposed to be gradually upgraded. So it's concerning that this is, the township's been non-compliant since 1990. Thank you.
Okay. Open and award hardship road projects. We advertised some road projects. We have the ad here. There's two bids received. Does anyone open them up?
Drink a little soup.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
That's my dad's knife. I'm gonna need that back.
Exactly.
Mine's from Russell Stender. And the bid is $114,243.
Okay.
And the bid is $114,243.
Okay?
Mine is from Midland, and their bid is $143,397.
Any questions or comments on those two?
I have a question. What roads are they?
They are Rowing Willow and White Church.
So it's one price for all?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Total of, how many are there? About three and a half miles total.
Okay.
Willow Lane is 1.56, Rowing Road is 1.13, and White Church is 0.51.
Okay, so the lowest bid is 114. I'll make a motion, we accept that bid after approval, overview of the, from the engineer and our solicitor.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Question, please?
Yes.
How often are the roads reached? If that's the correct, how often is that done? Like for Rowing Road and Hotlins?
I'm trying to do like a five-year cycle on all the roads. Five or six-year cycle. Okay, the next item is discussing through the hiring of a part-time as-needed CDL driver. We talked about last month, and we put an ad, it was on the website, anybody interested that you can apply to begin. Anybody apply except for that one person?
Just one.
Okay. Questions or comments on that? The only thing, you mentioned about Butler maybe...
Butler may help us out somewhat, but they're probably going to be pretty busy. Their new building, and they have quite a few, they have one or two culverts that is urgent they're going to be doing, so I can check with them again and see if they'd be willing to help with one or two guys and help with that.
What is the timeframe that you think you'll need this as-needed person?
As-needed person, we've got a fair amount of base repair to do, and that's, I want to send the, while we prep the site for base repair, I want to send a gentleman for blacktop. So it's not just one person trying to get it ready while somebody goes for blacktop.
Okay.
That's, I'm looking at probably 10, 15 hours a week, and it might only be, might only be a month.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking at.
I guess, I have not met the candidate. Maybe we should table till next month until we have a chance to talk to the person.
What's your timeframe on your...
Yeah, when you...
Since we got the roller, it's kind of, we can fill in as needed. It's that because we have the roller now.
Okay.
We can...
I'll make a motion, we table that till next month, we have an opportunity to talk to the candidate. Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under new business acknowledged, new enterprise, public notice regarding the road work on Route 94. There's some road work that'll be done in 94, and it's in our township, so they notified us of that.
And again, there's flyers over there about that.
Okay. Next item is review and approve resolution... Next item is review and approve resolution for destruction of right-to-know documents. Troy, you want to explain that?
So the township has adopted the municipal records manual that provides for the timelines for destruction of certain records. Pat reached out. It's been a long time since there's been any right-to-know requests deleted or destroyed of the originals. And so basically, the timeframe to hold them is two years. So we pursuant to the act, the way you're supposed to do it is by resolution approving the destruction of certain records. So this is a resolution saying that anything's over two years old, so things received prior to May 1st, 2023, all those original right-to-know requests can be deleted.
That's him right there.
Yeah. You gonna set them on fire right away or what?
No, we've, we've had a right-to-know request to have them reviewed before we destroy.
Okay.
Yes?
I appreciate if you'd read the resolution, since we don't get a copy of what's going to be. And also, it's actually two years from the date of closing of the file or where the acknowledgement letter or, and the response was sent out. Is that what these documents are?
Well, we didn't destroy any yet, so.
Yeah.
But we will follow what the resolution says.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, I checked with the office of, at the Historical Museum and spoke to an archivist, and he explained to me and sent me a sample resolution, et cetera.
Okay.
So you indicated that, and we had a discussion two years ago about, about destruction of documents and what the, and Pat had indicated that we were, we had adopted the manual and the retention. So when was that actually adopted? Do you know? Because that is supposed to be in the resolution.
I have no idea.
We looked it up in a book a lot ago, but I don't know what the date was. I don't recall.
Okay. I mean, that's part of the sample, is when that was adopted.
Okay.
So...
So we have a resolution here in front of us. We'll have to take action on that. Any comments or other questions? Okay. I'll have motion, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Could you read that resolution, please?
At the request of Rita Gange, I will now read this resolution. Huntington Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania. A resolution of Huntington Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania authorizing the destruction of original copies of public records as specifically provided for by the Municipal Records Act. Whereas Huntington Township, the township formerly adopted a record retention and destruction policy to be consistent with the Municipal Records Act 53 and Municipal Records Manual less amended and approved on March 28th, 2019. And whereas in accordance with the act, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. And whereas the Board of Supervisors desired authorize the township secretary to destroy original copies of all right-to-know requests that are over two years old, which is consistent with the Municipal Records Manual, should last amended and approved on March 28th, 2019. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Huntington Township, Adams County, Pennsylvania as follows. Section 1, recitals. The recitals set forth above are incorporated herein by reference heretofore. Section 2, authorization. The township secretary by and through said office or an approved representative for said office is hereby authorized to destroy the original copies of right-to-know requests that were received prior to May 1st, 2023. Severability. The provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable, and if any section, subsection, sentence clause, or part thereof, for any reason held to be invalid, unlawful or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of any remaining section, subsection, sentences, clauses, or part of this resolution. Section 4, repealer. All resolutions or part of resolutions in conflict with any of the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. Section 5, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and adoption, duly adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Huntington Township this 8th day of May.
Okay. It's also supposed to include the records, the records, not a list of each of those books, but a general resolution is supposed to include how many, like, say five binders, whatever. But one of the words in there does it, it indicates received before a certain date. It, as I said, according to the archivist over at the Historical Museum, it is supposed to be from two years.
I will have our solicitor verify what we had to do prior to destroying any documents.
Okay, thank you.
If your archivist is correct, then we'll...
Well, yeah. It's not mine, it's the Historical Museum and the manual.
Well, if the archivist you talked to is correct.
Thank you.
Item 3, discuss and approve changes in appointed officials, zoning officer, building permit officer, and flood plain administrator. As previously mentioned, we had an executive session about a personnel issue, and Gus Reedvold, our zoning officer, is no longer employed by Huntington Township. So we need to ratify that termination as an employee from the township. So I will make a motion that we ratify the separation and termination of employment by Gus Reedvold. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So now the question is, what are we, what are we going to do since we don't have a... Yes?
I think a sentence or two to thank Gus. I mean, he's been here for many, many years. And thank him for his service to the people of Huntington Township would be in order.
Correct. Thank you. So Gus's last day was Saturday, so we need to establish new zoning officer and building permit officer. In discussion with other municipalities and looking at what other people are doing, and our planning commission, chair and vice chairman, when we went in, agreed with MDIA, there was a conversation about would they be willing to accept some of his responsibilities, and they are, and they're doing three municipalities in this county now for inspections and building code enforcement. Sir?
The acronym for MBIA?
Middle Department Inspection Agency. They're from Camp Hill, Pennsylvania.
Are they with the government or...?
No, 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 no. They're, they're a third-party company. Okay?
So that ensures, that ensures that...
They're our current building inspector. Currently. Yeah.
Now with the zoning, with zoning, is that all we care about is building inspectors?
No, the zoning, the zoning officer has to make sure that anybody wants to do something is meeting our zoning ordinance and compliance with that. The setbacks, the acreage, the stormwater, all those type of things. Okay? And then the building permit officer issues the building permit and then follows up with the inspections of those projects. Okay? So as I said, a lot of other municipalities are using MDIA. They have a step-by-step process on their website, how to apply for permits. Scott has agreed to handle the zoning part and becoming zoning officer, so he can become the zoning officer. The building permit officer then would hand, go to MDIA. I've talked to them. If you look at the other township's websites, they have step-by-step instructions, what you do, not to do. We just have to update our website and get the same forms updated to do that. So I think that's the best option we have. I mean, these guys can stay up with the regulations and the requirements and serve our people as well. Not better, in my opinion. Yes? Mark Lear?
So I've been trying to get a call with someone this week to ask about a building permit. So with just a regular building permit, whom am I contacting?
You will start with, you'll still start with the zoning officer to make sure you're complying. And then he, after he says you're good, he will contact and give the head up to, the heads up to the building permit officer. But what permit are you looking for, Mark?
Well, I'm saying, it's suppose you're going on a permit that doesn't require inspections. Are you going to have to go to the other company, or is that something he can...
The...
Just a regular permit from the town.
All building permits will be issued through MDIA. They're going to, they're going to issue all the permits, for building permits. Zoning permits first and then, but you, I mean, Gus reported two months ago, you, you received your extension of your permit. Are you looking for...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm talking about possibly doing something else.
Okay. But you have what you need currently, because...
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's Mike.
Yeah.
Mr. Waldron?
Is this gentleman, the zoning, is, are we going to hire a zoning officer? Is this gentleman...
No, no, we're not, we are not going to hire another employee.
Okay. So with that said, so this young man's accountable for all the zoning in the township, but then at the same time, I understand that you're outsourcing inspectors and so on and so forth. With zoning, there's more than just building, right?
No, that, that's what I said. The, he has the zoning ordinance. He will make sure everything's in compliance first. There'll be a zoning application and then a building permit application. Okay? The county requires, you know, stormwater plans, all that kind of stuff. And all those documents will be available on the website for people to complete. Any other questions? Yes?
I'd like to know, how is he being paid? How is Mr. Longstreth being paid? And once again, okay, your appointing, and it was just a little hazy on the agenda. If this was known ahead of time, how come this MBIA or whatever it is and Mr. Longstreth wasn't mentioned in the agenda?
I'm bringing that up as an option so we can discuss it. If we approve it, then we'll approve it. Okay? So it's not pre-decided? We, you guys, if you guys think there's a better option...
But it doesn't, it says discuss and approve changes, so you're going to vote on it, correct?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I mean. It just says appoint, in appointed officials, and it doesn't say Mr. Longstreth or MBIA. Like, why is it that the agenda seem to be so hazy and not give enough information to people? Because I'd like to know what he's going to be paid now.
He's going to be paid his, his current rate, which is $103 an hour. Am I correct?
I'm a consultant for the township. I'm not an employee.
Right.
So you're going to be paying me my consultant rate?
Right.
And that is dependent on...
He's an attorney officer, then you are an employee of the township.
No, no, no. He's a third-party.
Okay. So when I came in here before you get a permit, I paid a fee based on the size of one building as a permit.
Correct.
So is that the way it's still going?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
So the township's going to pay his fee, hourly fee to do a permit?
No, no. He's going to pay to make sure that your permit application meets zoning requirements, however, then...
Who's paying that?
Pardon me?
Who's paying him for that?
The township.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's part of his, it's going to be part of his service, am I correct? I mean, he provides us a service to look at the application, to make sure that it fits with the zoning. If it does, then he'll forward the information to MDI. They will issue the permit and send you a bill based, based on the size and all the particulars, correct?
The fee structure has, we have to resolve, make sure the fee structures make sense.
Yeah.
But, you know, the way it is now, you, when you apply for a permit, the inspection fee, the permit fee, the UCC, it's all on a form. And we're going to have that same form.
So it's not going to cost me any, cost me the resident any more than it did before to apply for a permit?
Uh, you're going to be, pay whatever MDI, whatever MDI bills you, which you are now. You're paying an inspection fee now. If you have an inspection, you're paying that fee.
I mean, I don't have inspection fees, but most things like whole buildings and things like that aren't inspections.
Right.
So they wouldn't, there wouldn't be any of those fees. So it'd just be a go to him first?
Correct.
He reviews it, then second to them?
We're going to have, like I said, we're going to have a step-by-step, if you look at Latmore's website, Butler Township, Germany, MDI has a step-by-step process. We're have to review that to make sure that makes sense for our township. But yes, I mean, it tells you, you go to zoning, if you do a land development, if you need a stormwater, you know, need a well permit, a driveway permit, it's a step-by-step process.
Is that available here tonight or...
No, because we, we have an adopt... It'll be on the website as soon as we make the adoption of this.
Can I come in here and get the information? I got to go on the website?
Uh, I don't know that yet.
It hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I would think we...
I'm sure if it's on the website, we could give a hard copy to someone.
Yeah, we, yeah.
You can print off a hard copy off of the website if, you know, if you so choose.
Right. I mean, the other option is to look and try to hire a zoning officer, which...
How long was Gus here? 1999?
Uh, he was in 26 years.
He started in 99.
Would it be the township to maybe see if somebody's interested in picking that up? Because we've all been so used to that service.
Uh, you know, I, I think, I don't know that that's a good option.
Well, we're looking for part-time CDLs as needed. Can we get a part-time zoning officer as needed?
But I think when you, a part-time, I just don't think that makes sense from a perspective to have somebody in here working 24, 25 hours a week based on the number of permits we have.
Not enough for that?
Yeah, it's, we could look at that. I mean, whatever we do, it's not forever. It doesn't have to be forever, obviously.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it needs to be something set up to, right now, people need their permit.
Well, no, that's why we want to adopt this, to get it done.
That's why we're trying to, trying to move on this and decide, make a decision tonight and decide what we're going to do.
But this week, people called looking for buil, building permits, and Scott, and we're, we're trying to handle things that are already in progress and get them going. And, yes, sir?
In my piece earlier, Scott turned to me and he said, please break that down. And I said, with the assumption that he worked for the township, to look into the proper permits that are need on the commercial portions of our township. With that said, is the township going to assign him a job to go into all the commercial facilities and make sure, when people come in commercially, they give you a business plan?
When somebody, a commercial building has to be inspected by the building inspector.
Aside from the building, I'm not talking about the building. I'm not talking about a road. I'm not talking about a culvert. I'm talking about what the facility does, and is it appropriately licensed? That's what I'm talking about. You have a food establishment. Is somebody coming in from the state to inspect to make sure that everything's clean? And generally, the state has to be invited. If you were to go down to Gettysburg into a restaurant, on the wall is a bunch of inspectors that come in there and make sure that they're saving safe food. If you were to go into a Huntington Township restaurant and look for them on the wall, they're not there. Now with that, that has what comes...
Where's the restaurant, Huntington Township?
Sir, we don't have any restaurant.
Right up here on the hill. What, is that in Huntington Township?
That's the burrow.
No.
That's the burrow.
Okay, well, forgive me. But, all right, well, all right, I won't even use a restaurant in the case of whether or not it's a mulch facility or a compost facility. Who in zoning is telling me whether it's compost or if it's mulch? And who is assuring me in the township that they're a comic, that they're abiding by all the laws? Who? Next door to me, there's a facility that's going to, is it a manufacturing facility? The new one that you just permitted? It's a wonderful guy. Is it manufacturing? Does he file all the manufacturing permits? Or is it storage for him? Or what is it? What is it? I don't know.
Mr. Wald, you're, you're way off the target here in all the...
No, it has to do with zoning and protection.
Zoning is, does it meet the ordinance as applied? If it does, then they're permitted to do that.
All right. What ordinance is, do you have on a commercial, in the commercial areas of our...
The building code inspector would make sure they're complying with the building code. If they're operating a business, DEP or whatever...
Yes, that's my question.
...would be under, would be responsible to do the inspection.
Right. Now who in the township is inviting DEP or whoever to make sure? It's the zoning officer that has to do it. In other words, and so, is this...
Sir, sir, any citizen can contact...
You're not understanding me. There's more than building permits.
Sir, no, I'm understanding you. If you have a concern about air quality or water quality, you can reach out as, as citizen to DEP directly. If you have a concern about air quality or water quality, you can reach out as a citizen to DEP directly, the county directly, and they...
No, no, you're not understanding. I went to the county, the county put me to DEP. DEP, I called him up, and the fellow at DEP told me that he doesn't have any authorization to inspect that facility because I had to go to the township. I guess it's not your ordinance. So I move that this people put an ordinance up here that makes sure that all the businesses within the township are accommodated by Pennsylvania State law.
Well, they are, they are, they are regulated by Pennsylvania State law.
EB Mulch and Clearing has a permit from DEP to do that.
To do what? You tell me what your permit is. Their permit, EB Mulch has a permit for grading the facility and how the water goes off the facility into a pond. DEP went into EB Mulch, and I called the girl, I was like, "As long as you're there, let's get on it." She told me that Harrisburg contracted only, only the water that runs off. And I said to her, "How about the mounds of mulch that that water goes through?" She said, "And if you look at that piece that's on the agenda that you got from her, it has to do with EB grading, grading the property and where the water runs off." It has nothing, nothing to do with outdoor manufacturing, air pollution, all the generates that go up in the air. Nothing to do with that, nothing. So DEP is not doing anything with my project.
Okay.
You're not understanding me, man.
Sir, you, you're out of order, please sit down. We've talked about...
I'm not out of order, you're out of order.
Sir, DEP has inspected that facility, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
How do I know that they're gonna continue to, and be held to continue to keep my air safe? Right now, you have DEP telling that their facility isn't right and they didn't do it since 2014.
And DEP has the enforcement right and they're the ones that can enforce any issues, okay?
That's not what I'm hearing from DEP. And then at the same time, your guy's telling me that they're there on a permit and they're doing a dirt permit.
Do you have a comment, Marie?
Yeah, uh, first off, I think you can speak, sir, during EB's, that's coming up, when they're discussing this new property, I believe. Because of course, on the agenda, it doesn't say what you're going to be discussing. But I wanted to know, what is the difference between a hundred and three dollar fee for a Mr. Longstreth? What was the per hour for Gus as an employee?
What was his wage, I don't know.
The treasurer may know since he, how much?
I think it's 23 or 23.50, I'm not sure.
Okay. And is he going to be here at this office for the convenience of the residents?
None of that has been established at this point in time, but...
Well, it's important to discuss that before you all make a deal.
It's not a deal, ma'am, it's not a deal.
You don't have to be nasty. I mean, you're elected officials and you're supposed to be representing the residents. So, and I know that...
But, you know, your question about Mr. Friedenfroh's wage rate is irrelevant in this conversation because this is as needed versus, you know, somebody being in the office all the time. So you can't say 23 versus 103.
Well, I'm just asking a general question because I wanted to know.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, there's a completely, it's apples and oranges.
So this is going to be temporary, do we know how much temporary is?
No, we need to appoint somebody so we can continue to issue zoning permits and building permits. Okay, we need to do that. So we either do what I'm suggesting and what we discussed, or we look for a zoning officer, which there's nobody, the whole county is short on zoning officers at this point in time, and building inspectors. It's a real problem in this county, and that's why I think this is the best option, so. Any other comments?
Can I make one quick comment?
Yes.
From Tom Strick.
Yes.
And this is addressed to Jamie's point where he said, "The guy..." MDIA is not a guy, it's a company. It's a company that already does the inspections for us. They inspect and do the permitting process through multiple townships because it's very difficult to get anybody in these townships now, even part-time, to do the building inspections, to do the zoning verifications, et cetera. So that's why appointing somebody like them, and I'm not suggesting you do it, you guys have more information on this, although I've worked with them, and other townships work with them. And so I'm very aware of their work and they're very reputable. They may end up, Marie, saving a substantial amount of money because we may not need them more than a couple hours a month instead of Gus sitting here all day, every day. We don't know that for sure yet, we have to test this out a bit. But this isn't, you can't compare 103 to 43, that's just not the right comparison. And I know you weren't making that, you were asking a question. But it's an obvious comparison to make if somebody's making one. So this is an option, and I don't see another one, not even the better one, I don't even see another one right now. Every township in this county is struggling with this right now because we have many retirements of building inspectors and we have many retirements of code enforcement officers and the other roles that Gus played. So I just, just a comment.
Thank you.
I suppose that's my question. Code enforcement. Is this fellow?
Yes.
All right, now who initiates his code enforcement? Aside from someone coming in here and asking for a building permit?
If somebody comes to the township with an accusation or concern about somebody not following our zoning, Mr. Longstreet will investigate.
Thank you.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we appoint Scott Longstreet from Share Design Corporation as our zoning officer. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
You referenced that you'll be paying him a similar rate to his engineering fee.
At the same current rate as the engineering rate, okay.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, building permit officer. I'll make a motion, we appoint MDIA Middle Department Inspector's Agency as our building permit officer at their current rate.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last one is the floodplain administrator. My knowledge is basically if somebody, if somebody is zoning...
That's part of their...
That's part of that, so, and we have to send and report to anyone. So I will make a motion, we appoint Scott Longstreet of Share Design as our floodplain administrator. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, subdivisions and land developments, JVI review and approve request. I'll dig that, Scott, dig.
They were conditionally approved over two months ago. With conditional approval, they have 90 days to complete all the conditions or the plan becomes automatically denied. It doesn't look like they're gonna be able to meet that deadline, so they're asking for a 30-day extension of that conditional approval.
Okay. Questions about that?
Excuse me, JVI's, could you just state the address, please?
It's on Old Harrisburg Road.
It's the old McLeary French, just there.
Yeah, if I could make a suggestion, can we from now on put down instead of property owners, if you have to do the owners but also include the property? Because usually zoning, et cetera, and I was the real estate secretary. It's always properties, it's not owners that... So it's just confusing when you say like 4J. Okay, we have new people maybe coming in because of Pat's succession. People won't know who 4J Farms, I don't know who they are. You know, so, I appreciate you taking a suggestion.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the request for the 30-day extension for the JVI.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4J Farms, Mr. Scott, would you... That's located on Oxford Road and Ziggler Mill Road, correct, at the intersection?
Cranberry Road and...
Yeah, okay.
There's no street address? Not, no?
Property is located at 1010 Cranberry Road, Gardners, PA. Partially 150 acres, we're subdividing it two acre parcel at the intersection of Oxford Road and, or the Ziggler Mill Road. The remainder of the property has been placed in the Land Conservancy, Land Conservancy easement. We've addressed all the engineer comments. We got a new comment today from the sewage enforcement officer upon his review of the planning module. But I'm asking for conditional approval tonight of the subdivision plan.
Okay. Conditional approval based on the correction, the, taking care of the condition and the question by the sewage enforcement officer? Okay.
There's two other conditions, assigning ceiling by the surveyor and saving and having a notarized statement by the property owner. So there'd be three conditions.
I think those plans are here.
Okay, I haven't seen them, so I don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Scott brought them in for the Planning Commission agenda and they were given to Gus for the Planning Commission agenda.
You guys address.
He brought them in April 10th.
He had them in.
April 28th meeting.
Wasn't, wasn't those the plans that they brought in?
Yes, but I don't, I don't remember.
They were never before the Planning Commission.
That's correct, and I don't, and one of my challenges is when it's conditionally approved, the condition should be on there. So even if it says conditionally approved, I don't know what condition is on there. So I can't sit here and say we conditionally approve something without conditions.
They didn't have the second sewer...
Yeah, that...
The location for the...
You need the alternative sewage.
Yeah. But can if the conditions are satisfied?
For the April's meeting, I brought revised plans.
All right, but if my point is, if the conditions are satisfied...
Yeah, and the condition, the only condition that was not satisfied was like Scott just said...
The SEO condition.
Right. Was the SEO and signing and notarization of plans.
Okay. But that's done, you're saying that's done?
They were brought in, yes, in April's meeting.
Well, if it's done, then the condition is satisfied.
With the note to be on the agenda for the Planning Commission, April 28th. The note was with the plans?
We're in a position again with, in this transition period, so...
Yep.
I think if we can say that approved by, the conditions are met...
Yeah, I mean, if the conditions are satisfied, this is moved.
It's not approved until the conditions are addressed.
Yeah.
And you're okay.
Right.
Everything meets your criteria.
I'll entertain a motion to conditionally approve.
I will make that motion, that we conditionally approve the 4J plans.
With the conditions.
With the conditions being met.
I'll second it.
Okay, the movement's second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. EB Clearing?
Thank you.
EB Clearing, July 20th, this is the land development.
This is the land development project.
Their address is? Just so everybody knows, it's the other EB Clearing.
Old Harrisburg Road. Which we don't need to take any action on that now.
No, we have not addressed the comments, sir.
Sir?
They're asking for a land development.
At a different address on Old Harrisburg Road.
Correct. With that said, land development for what?
For A.
What is the business that's going to be on the property?
Retail sale of mulch.
Retail sale of mulch?
Retail sale of mulch. So there will be no manufacturing on that facility?
Correct.
So will it be written and outlined in all the correct permits that the only thing that they're doing is retail sale?
That's what their plan says.
Okay, and it's EB Clearing that's applying, or is it EB Mulch?
EB Clearing is the property owner.
What is the business owner?
The property owner will be the business owner.
Such a different company?
Yeah, there's two different companies. You have EB Mulch and Soils, and you have EB Land Clear.
All I know is what was on the plan.
The plan was submitted...
I looked up the parcel information on the county's website and verified it.
Now, in the event that they start chopping and making mulch on that property, will this township say that they're just a retail facility? In other words, is there a classification that's gonna be assigned to that property, whether it's retail, manufacturer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
They have applied for a retail mulch operation. That's what we're approving.
If we approve it, we have to do that.
We don't have a land development plan.
We don't have the plan.
We have a plan, like we've approved it.
With that, I'm splitting hairs. There's land development, then there's business. The business on the land, that's where I'm going.
We can reply to any of your questions because we don't have the plan.
Well, with that said, back to White Church facility, where they approved to be a manufacturing facility or a retail facility. As my discussions were with Gus, he was a retail facility, selling some stone and mulch. With that said, it turned into a manufacturing facility of which encompasses agricultural permits, manufacturing permits. The county is looking at it like a... Not a mulch, what's the other one? A compost facility. I'm asking the township, what is the facility across the street from me? And what, that's my question, what is the facility? What is it? What business is it?
What were they approved for?
Correct.
It's a mulch manufacturing, to my knowledge. I don't have the, I don't have the approval here.
The last time you were in, I looked up, and I'm pretty sure the conditional use decision says that they were approved as a manufacturing facility.
Correct.
Okay, manufacturing what?
Mulch.
In other words, where's compost come into mulch?
We should have that information in the...
It's not there, and that's where I'm going with you. What is the facility approved for? What they're actually doing on the facility? And what is the business? And where is airborne, sorry, we, I got it, but you, that's back to my point. You guys are talking about dirt and shaving it, but you're not, you, this, you put commercial in. There's more to commercial than the ground that it sits on. That's my point.
No other subdivisions or land developments? Yes?
I have a question, since Mr. Waldron brought it up. The last report from the Conservation District, their inspection report, indicated that there was supposed to be a meadow. And Mr. Longstreth indicated at the Planning Commission meeting that this plan and this business has been going on for 10 years. It's an awful long time for someone not to have completed what they're supposed to be completing. So apparently, there's a building instead of the meadow. So was there a building permit issued for that particular building? I mean, and now they're coming with something else for another property and they're not even being compliant on the other property. So I think you should take that into consideration of, what is this gonna be changed in the middle? Or he makes his mind up and he's gonna start now producing or manufacturing mulch or compost on that property?
That's the point.
Okay. Rate to no request, 41125 Marina Ganges, Salzman Hughes, 25 of March invoices, 411... Rate-to-no request, 411-25 Marie DeGangi, Salzman Hughes, 25 of March invoices, 411-25 Marie DeGangi, Share Design Group, March 25 invoices, 411-25 Marie DeGangi, copy of the executed contract in effect between Huntington Township and Waste Management, and copy of the rate increase notice, 413-25 John D. Nicola, copy of employee's handbook and policies, employees must follow as county employees, 415-25 John D. Nicola, right-to-no request regarding the Laura Hope video of 413-24, instructions to preserve the video and email to solicitor King regarding PH statute that could be violated, 415-25 Marie DeGangi, contracts, reports, correspondence, invoices between the Township and Schaefer Architects, 7, 416-25 Marie DeGangi, correspondence sent to property owners, reason, rain-water runoff. Okay. Upcoming meetings, Huntington Township Planning Commission is May 19th at 7:00, our next meeting is June 12th at 7:00, Narema meeting is July 2nd at Man Allen Township at 6:00. Public comment?
I just have one question I got brought up.
Elizabeth Howard.
Yes, I'm sorry, of Rolling Road.
Yes.
On me. I brought up last meeting about the runoff of that particular man's property...
Correct.
And asked if anything had been done, and I was told that a gutter spout had been installed. Has anything else been done to help the kids whose property has all this water going down and destroying his foundation?
It's part of the transition, Gus was involved in that, so I can't answer that. I know the spouting was addressed and corrected.
The neighboring property owner was sent two notices so far to have his downspouts relocated.
Right. So it's, he has, he has relocated the one downspout per Gus.
So nothing's been done that you know of?
No, so he did, he was notified of things to do, and he has done some, and some of them I cannot tell you if everything's been corrected. I've not heard from the complainant.
Okay. Thank you.
Cody Lear.
At the Myers Town Road culvert progression, you said that they awarded the bid for the excavation of that, but you did not say how much it was. How much was that?
It was awarded last meeting.
All the, all the bids were publicly read and all the amounts were noted.
Oh, I was not here.
It's 100 and, I forget what, 162?
60s.
No, 190 something.
190 something.
And that's just for the excavation?
No, that's the project.
That's the whole, okay.
Yeah.
The Greenbrier one, we got low-volume road funds to help that. Is any of that going with Myers Town?
No.
There's a lot of culverts like that in this township. Is 200,000 going to be a standard operating procedure now for a culvert of that size? Because if it is, that's going to drain this bank account pretty big.
And I absolutely agree with that. Yeah.
So, I mean, I know they're looking for a part-time guy, maybe you need to get a full-time guy and put some of them plates in, if you can, because that's, that's a lot of money for one plate.
That size, a lot of times, we can't do it because of the engineering and the stake that's involved.
All the requirements have to be met for DEP to give you the permit to do it. I do the bare minimum to get the permit. I don't add extra cost to the project.
But the township could still put it in after the permit is done?
If we have the equipment and the time and person, yeah, I understand.
Well, it was done, it's been done in the past.
Yeah, yeah, but not, we didn't put in, we didn't put things like Greenbrier in.
Mules raved, I put a huge one in. We've done a couple of them, but anyhow, what I want to ask is, okay, so now I'm asking the same question he asked earlier. This is the guy to call for, set up for a permit, right?
Yep.
Okay, so how do I contact him?
We will have his number available, I'll put it on the website, you can call it there, and Pat's gonna have his cards in here too.
Okay, so stop in here.
You can give him the office number right now, Scott, if you like.
I'll give you your card, Pat has a card.
Okay, that'd be good. Thank you.
Okay. Marie?
Yeah, I want to remind the solicitor and the board, in reference to the Sunshine Act violations, and Pat indicating her minutes do not have to be verbatim, which is fine. The problem is, Jonathan Jacobs came in here with my civil rights attorney when I wanted minutes corrected, and you were told, and the opinion states, and you can check it, when a meeting is on social media and someone comments something, it's supposed to be correct. And you're, the fact that this, my assertion that there was a violation of the Sunshine Act is not properly worded. So you can look up JJ Jonathan Jacobs' opinion about what is supposedly, when it's on social media, you're live streaming right now, and we're recording. So I just want to remind you of that. And I specifically indicated I wanted it in the minutes, the assertion. So now I want to talk about code of conduct and the handbook for the employees. Previous months, the behavior of certain individuals, employees of this township, is egregious. Chad Asper, Assistant Roadmaster, flipped me off. There's a photo on our Huntington Township watch, when I was just doing pictures of the aisles, et cetera, for my attorney. Then we have Chuck King, Roadmaster, raises his voice screaming, "Why I don't have the pledge of allegiance on my videos?" I don't answer to any employee in here. You all answer to us, the taxpayers, and you should remember that. Even in the case with Mr. Waldron, you're supposed to represent him. You are supposed to take control of the issue and contact DEP, contact, like I said, have the Conservation District and the DEP come in here and answer his questions. Why does he have to do it? You have, you volunteered for these positions, and you're supposed to be working for the residents. We're not supposed to be working for you. Just in the case with the fly issue at that place that you ran out the 800,000 chicken farm. You, you told Mr. Clymel, "Call my, your tenant." Well, that's fine, but when we have issues, these people don't listen to residents. It's just like you here, you don't listen to us, you don't listen to anybody in this room. When we come with complaints or issues, you don't want to hear it. Just your attitudes tonight. So let me continue on. Most recently, at the BOs meeting, in discussing the complaint which a woman brought up back here, the rainwater runoff on Wehrmann's Mill Road, when Gus was talking about it, he indicated that the resident, and I found out because of my right-to-no request where you had me check out all the names, et cetera, David Park had not remediated, and Gus made the comment, "We'll have to take a two-bike fork to him." That is a threat, and not anyone here said a word. You, as the attorney, should have stopped him immediately, and I don't care if you had to take him to the back room and tell him it was inappropriate. That should have been done, because that is a threat. So as to the electronic recycling event, there was a discussion at two meetings, no, I'm sorry, one meeting. No, twice. So Gus had indicated, oh, it's for residents, well, actually, there was a discussion, and Kyle Smith, a PC member, told Mr. Longstreth, oh, because Mr. Longstreth thought he could bring his TV, and he found it, and Gus said, "No, you have to be a resident and a customer of waste management." So Kyle Smith said, "Well, you know what? If you know someone in the township, get them to do it." Totally inappropriate. And then Moreland Enzer, as a school, as a school district employee, had a request, an unauthorized request, he said, "We have 12 or 14 TVs that we have to get rid of, can we bring them?" Gus said, "Sure, bring all down." Gus even said at that first meeting, "Yeah, split me five bucks." He thinks he's joking. That was livestreamed. Is that what you all want this township to look like? So I'd like to know, with all these things, has any discipline been done against any of these employees specifically for what I've mentioned?
I...
And I know it's personnel. All I want to know is, was there any disciplinary action against any of the PC members or the employees?
It's a personnel issue, and we're not going to reply to that question.
Okay. So here's one I expect you to answer. Do you, as the Board of Supervisors, condone that type of behavior of township employees?
This is public comment, it's not public interrogation or public question.
Excuse me, I'm asking a question.
And I will not answer your question.
All right. You show your true colors a lot here. So I expect, I will be putting formal complaints in against everyone that I just mentioned. And I'd like to know, you had indicated when we talked, you talked about Gus, termination, was he terminated or did he resign?
That's a personnel issue. He is no longer an employee, and we terminated his employment with the township.
You terminated?
No, no, no.
The word is terminated, you're using, this is what I mean.
I, it's a personnel issue, I'm not going to discuss it anymore than that.
Well, I hope one day, all of you get voted out.
I would wish you would be a supervisor, ma'am, because I...
I wouldn't work with any of you, because you know what? It's character and integrity, and at that Planning Commission meeting, when Gus said, "Oh, yeah, split me five bucks," and then he admitted that he has never, ever turned anyone away, that is theft and deception, and it's theft against waste management, and it's disgusting.
Thank you for your opinion.
No, it's a fact.
Any other public comment?
I do have one more. I want to tell, there are only five people in this township that I respect. Tom Strife, Ted Decker, and the three members of the zoning of Hereingwood. Because the rest of you have shown your true colors, including the solicitor.
You have a comment?
No, the other comment I would have is that Paul and Jeff didn't have no problem discussing my personal employment in front of the whole world when I was employed here. It wasn't very, very nice. Just a comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? I will make a motion for German, is there a second?
Date, you want to talk about rescheduling the condition?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, what date works for you?
I think it should be independent of a meeting.
I agree, absolutely.
Because the applicant has an attorney, and apparently there's some neighboring resident, so it could take obviously more than a half an hour.
Yeah, I would think we need to have an independent date.
Whatever, just personal dates outside. What about like June 5th, the week before the meetings?
It's fine with me.
All right. I'll confirm that works for their attorney.
Okay.
And then...
You don't have to advertise it.
Yeah. So is Scott going to be the one that posts the property and does all the legal advertising? And then are you going to get the stenographer? Do you want me to get the stenographer?
We'll get this, we can, we will take care of the stenographer.
All right. And Saturday?
You'll confirm this later.
Yeah. Yeah. I want to make sure that your attorney's available.
Okay.
At 7 o'clock?
Yeah, that's him.
All right. Okay.
So we have a motion, second for German, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.